So at 6:17 PM, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the U-46 School Board. And I would like to take up as a first item of action if there's any changes to the agenda. I don't have any suggestions at this time. I think we can proceed in the order that they are presented. If we're in favor of that, then we'll move on. Are there any visitors or staff to be heard at this time? Seeing none. And we'll go into principals' reports. Rob, I'd like to start with you. Do you think we have, I think there's a chance here? You said, where do you want to?
Yeah, I can go. I wouldn't trust that clock. I'll trust this. Twenty, yeah, I've got a few minutes.
Okay.
So besides what's in the report, just a couple of other things to report on. A follow-up to a segment there I included on the Class of 1975, because I think it's just an important point to bring up, that on Saturday, August 15th, members of the Essex High School Class of 1975 totaling about 10 showed up for a tour of the facility. And as compared to the last couple of years, I had the wherewithal to get in touch with boosters. And they were here, and interesting to note, of the 10 folks who were here after our tour, seven bought gear, three who were not interested in gear were very happy to give donations and very excited about it. And in particular, when they got, as we were going around the campus, when they got in this library, they were very excited and jazzed about the facilities, as obviously there's a tremendous difference from 1975, five years into this building, to now, and included a trip over to the Rink and touring CTE areas as well, and the D-104 fab lab, et cetera, et cetera. So it was just interesting in conversations with Joan Baron, who I worked with to set this up, it was just a comment I'd make, is it was different in regards to how the reunion went in terms of ease of communication as compared to my own personal reunion that also occurred this summer, where I received an email invitation and I get regular electronic newsletters from my school, high school. And folks had to really work hard here to get information and whatnot. So just to put on everybody's radar again, that there is, I think, an opportunity collectively as we move forward for the ability to engage our alumni, who would very much value the opportunity to revisit here. But it was a wonderful experience, as they all are, and it was interesting to see the adults walk around and say, "Oh, that's where my locker is." And I remember when so-and-so did, you know, it was just nostalgic all over again for them. Another piece I'd like to bring up is in terms of declining enrollment or stabilizing enrollment now, an idea I had, which I'm gonna start to pursue a little bit, is looking to attract a finite amount of tuition-paying international students through the SEVIS program. Because with our exchange opportunities we have, in particular this summer, and Erin, I believe you were a host, with the SPIRAL program with 30 Chinese visiting us for two weeks, meeting with their folks after the exchange had concluded, there has been an his interest in terms of identifying, you know, top performing schools in the US that international students are interested in attending. So coincidentally, I was taking my daughter on a road trip to University of Maine for visiting colleges, and in the Bangor Daily Paper, there was a front-page article, I meant to bring it in tonight and I forgot, I will bring it in the next time, on how the state of Maine is taking that strategy as a state for their public high schools, not just private academies or private schools, to investigate the feasibility and the possibilities there. But I think that's a good way to perhaps, each year, five to 10 students who would be tuition-paying, and as a way to bolster and subsidize and bring in some revenue. So obviously, there's a lot of details to it. There is an initial cost for the process to occur, the screening process of about $4,000. And it's about, to my understanding, a five-to-six-month process before the school is either approved or not by Homeland Security. But I think it is an interesting, an interesting strategy as a way to get high-performing students, which would certainly benefit our students regardless of where they come from, given the fact we're from Vermont and we're not necessarily as diverse as other communities. And, you know, certainly that's something I want to investigate more, and I think it would be worthy of some conversation and communication, so I'm not-
And Rob, just to add on to that, a friend of mine is a teacher in the Concord, New Hampshire School District, and I just saw her about a week ago, and they actually have aggressively pursued and are, I don't know the number of students, but they have a Chinese-
Yes.
-tuition program in place. And I think it's a not insignificant number of students.
No, it's not. And-
We're lucky here, because we have SPIRAL-
Yes.
...which already has some of the infrastructure in place to really support with some of their support people.
Well, Dick Taylor, one of the coordinators, and his colleague, they are in China now for the next, I think, three to four weeks. And they're going to be talking about, because of the good experience the students had here and with the community support and hosting, they're going to be talking, and in particular STEM, that was a big conversation with some of the Chinese students here, as they learn more about what we had to offer. So I think there is a real good possibility here, to be honest with you.
And we're actually, John and I are hosting through SPIRAL, actually, she's coming this Friday, we're actually going to be hosting a 30-year-old Chinese teacher-
Nice.
-for three months.
Nice.
And I think they're going to try to do more of that. Now, she's going to be spending a day and a half, I think, each week at Stowe High School.
Mm-hmm.
She's taking classes at UVM, but maybe she could, you know, she's here, so maybe she'd just like any opportunity she could get to, I mean, we'll find out, you know, but-
Well, you know, I really thought of this four years, four or five years ago, and we had those eight Afghan students who joined us when I worked with Jane Vossler, the Essex Middle School Social Studies teacher, and they were here for a month. And I remember speaking to two of the young ladies when they were departing, and they really wanted to come here for their next academic year. But there was no way we could do it, because you need to be in an approved school, as you know, so. And then, as I've been kind of contemplating, okay, we're kind of flat enrollment, there isn't a big spike, there isn't a decrease either, and barring the legislator, legislative members changing the way the school choice is, I mean, funny, that would be a game changer too in terms of numbers, but I think this would be a way to increase students in a real positive way, students who really want to be here and really get more diversity, whether it's China or wherever, Bhutan, or, so I'm really excited about pursuing that.
I think that's a really cool idea.
And I certainly, obviously, keep you all in the loop. But that's a strategy I have. In terms of in-school stuff, as we were talking about a little bit before, the Admin and Form training went today, fabulous response by the teachers, multi-tiered system of supports, pretty much all Thursday morning. In terms of our in-service convocation was a big success on Friday with job-like training, and we have the freshmen tomorrow, so we're off to a good start, and our new staff members are doing extraordinarily well. So I'm really jazzed about this school year. I will be happy to take questions, but I gotta scoot.
Yep. And our S-PAC came in today, I think Judy, preliminary numbers?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Rob is off to the, kind of tee up the freshman parent meeting, so he'll be joining us when he's got that set. But in the meantime, why don't we ask Bob, could you give us?
So you have my report. In addition to what's there, I just want to say we had a very positive start to the year. Building, again, was phenomenal, given the work that the maintenance staff did all summer. The tech center is in really good shape. We have been focusing through our in-service on MTSS and two really key focal points for CTE going forward, and you'll see it in our action plan when we submit it, is the establishment of ESTs, which to date have not been something that the tech center has done, and data teams, specifically for data teams, we're going to be focusing on Admin and Form and program level assessment plans. So a lot of good positive energy from the staff around the idea. And as we explained today and over the last couple of days, the MTSS initiative really is a lens we're using to consider all best practices at the center, and it's not a one-year plan that we're working on, it's a three-to-five-year plan. So this year is really getting everybody up to speed about the language and the philosophy and the five core principles. And we know, and staff is starting to come to realize, MTSS is really a conversation about curriculum instruction and assessment, and teachers reflecting on the best instructional practice to lead to the best student outcomes. So a lot of good positive energy around that. I don't have admissions numbers for you today, I'll hold off on those until we have our first couple of weeks of students coming through. They're very strong. One thing that we did towards the end of the year was decided to add a fourth track of pre-tech back to the mix, because our enrollments for Natural Resources third track were off. So we've offset the dip in Natural Resources with an increase in 10th graders again, and our hope is that, when I talked to the board about this before, we were going to leapfrog each year, we were going to do one year of one Natural Resources program, and then have that third teacher go over to a different program of Natural Resources and alternate back and forth. What we came to realize is that because Natural Resources pre-tech was our biggest feeder there, we needed to put that back into place to get that natural leapfrogging to go on. So that, we really need a third more students in the mix to run the Natural Resources the way we want to. Side benefit to it is having shut down Natural Resources pre-tech for a year and working with the Natural Resources teachers about raising the bar, communicating greater expectations around math, science, literacy in the Natural Resources area. They have embraced it and now are working with the teachers for the sophomore class to infuse that attitude. So after this year, we'll actually have our first, hopefully, our first indoctrinated group of 10th graders ready to go into the junior/senior year program with a refreshed idea of what is necessary, the attitudes and the demeanor around being successful Natural Resources students. We'll still do forestry, we'll still do heavy equipment, but we're trying to get these students to understand that long-term, long-term success in this arena means you do math, you do English, you have a certain professional decorum that will bring you further down the road. I think it's going to be a very positive year by adding the Natural Resources pre-tech program back into the mix. The last thing that's in the report, just want to bring your awareness to the fact that we were awarded a $75,000 program innovation grant to add another leg of our engineering program. So this year will be a planning year to finalize curriculum, purchase equipment, and design facilities for a advanced manufacturing engineering program known as mechatronics. I'll bring more information as we along. We're focusing on three programs for more enrollments, and we are running open enrollment as we speak. We have students visiting us every day. We're focusing on childhood ed, human services, professional foods, and building trades commercial. Those are our three programs that we're targeting to get to full. Most others are, I'd say, approaching full or fall.
Are there any questions for Bob?
Bob, I had a question.
Yes.
Is there, I don't even know if this is something possible to do, but is it possible to do some kind of a nursing program? Is that something that a tech school in Vermont can offer?
We have a very strong LNA program in Skill Tech. It's usually one of our more popular ones. Tech centers around the state who tried to do an LNA program for high school students run into the age requirement for their clinicals.
Okay.
And I think that the State Visiting Nurses Association, or the licensing body for nurses in the state, are very reluctant to have full-blown LNA programs for high school students. I think we could fill it with our adults who are interested.
It's just such a, such a need for-
There is such a need. The risk is, there is such a need, that by the third quarter, I think our program would see a large flight of adults from it. And we have to build programs with-
Right.
-school-age students as priority in mind first.
I was, I figured there had to be some kind of-
But we have a very popular and very successful LNA program through Skill Tech, and in fact, we've gotten some grant dollars to connect with Vermont Adult Learning, because a large number of our students in the Skill Tech program are English language learners. So we've been pairing English language learning instruction with our technical instruction to better prepare the students to be successful and to pass the test.
And then I just, I just thought that was really cool about the house selling. That was only on the market for, wasn't on the market too long, was it?
It got to market late, it wasn't on long.
Yeah.
It was about the fifth family that came through. We're crossing our fingers, we're supposed to close on Thursday.
Oh.
Asphalt went down today.
Okay.
I think we're there, but I, if you had asked me Friday at 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock, I'd say, "I'm not sure." But yes, and it's a testament to the quality of construction that the program achieves through the students, and we're already, we're already in permitting process for the next house. If you get a chance to go up and see the Taft Street Extension, it's a beautiful road.
So how many more lots are there?
There are five that are permitted.
Okay.
And a potential six more.
Okay.
Or seven more down the road, depending on how we divide. The five are on either side of the road that will be paved, and then there's a road that travels further on down the field, that's going, that's only going to be an emergency access road until we go for permits for the next phase.
Is that a two-year, how long does it take to build the-
Takes us two years to build a house.
Yeah.
And the next one, as in my notes, is going to be a net zero home. We met with the architects last week, very excited about that as a, as an educational-
Who do you plan on, how do you do it?
Women in Banff Air. And I think at the last meeting, we committed to truly a net zero, which requires a whole different heating plan and, yeah, but it's, it's, it's an exciting, it's an exciting step for us. I'm pretty sure there's no other tech center in the state that's built a net zero home.
Anyone else? I just wanted to say, congrats on that grant. I mean, a $75,000 grant is a significant grant, and it's fantastic to come in and that kind of support to a new program is really exciting. The action plan slide deck that you, that's in the org notes, the outcomes, the 2014/2015 outcomes slide deck, where, what, does that, is that something that will live on your website anywhere? I mean, it, I mean, it just, it's a great piece of data that you put together.
I'm not sure which one you're talking about.
There's-
I'm looking at the org notes now.
Yeah, so-
Oh, they made it in there.
Yeah.
Where is it? Yes, and in fact, the language comes right from our action plan.
Yeah.
So-
I mean, it's just great evidence.
Oh, I see what you're talking about, yeah.
I mean, as far as just kind of public-
We could absolutely put it on the website. This is a, this is a way I get to talk about action plan without actually putting an action plan in front of staff.
Yeah.
We talk about it in terms of priorities. And every year, we end with where, where we, where we landed with our priorities.
Yep.
I think it's a really honest conversation about, did we or did we not?
Yeah.
If we didn't, are we going to continue with it? And then every year, when we come back together in August, we put the next priorities in front of us.
Right. I thought you did a great job with that. So sort of, it feels like we're just coming up to speed on it, this, this expansion of pre-tech to the four-
Right.
-sections. So, you know, pre-tech has been one of those areas where we've been seeking the students that are qualified-
Yes.
-to participate in pre-tech. I'm assuming we did that and were able to create three sections out of it.
It's a great question, Brian. It's exactly what happened. We were looking at a time where we weren't getting the interest in trying to expand the Natural Resources section, and we had double enrollments for one of the three existing pre-tech sections, Dave Carter's, Building Trades, and Automotive. So we were looking at double the need, and what we had set up was a first-come, first-served. If you turn in your proof of credits, you get the slot. And it just was kind of a nexus of ideas coming together at the same time, when I realized, we don't have to say no to these students. That profile oftentimes is interested in something that looks like Natural Resources too.
Yep.
So we were able to capture all those qualified students and put them in another track without reducing our enrollment requirements.
Okay. So we won't, we've got enough math and English and other elements already built into the schedule to handle a fourth pre-tech?
Yes, we do.
Because of the qualifications of the students coming in?
Because of the qualifications of the students coming in and because of the way we're staffing the, the fourth track. Yeah, absolutely.
And I went up to the Taft Street area and checked it out, and it's really exciting.
Yeah.
And it's, the second expansion should be equal, so we've got secured about 20 years' worth of building.
That's right.
21 years is still up to grabs there, the 21st year, but we've got some time. But that's really exciting to know, and it's also really exciting to see the evolution to, from sort of the, because Taft Street gets you to visit the beginning.
Right.
You know, the first house on Taft Street was one of the first houses by the Center for Technology. So the idea that Taft Street will have the first house and the first net zero house is, is super exciting to see where the program is going.
Yeah, thanks. And maybe around 2018, we'll do a 2030 visioning process for, for Building Trades and Natural Resources. Because there's a lot of questions about how to buffer the school space near the neighborhood.
Yep.
There are a lot of interesting, a lot of interesting questions to answer-
Sure.
-about the community building.
Yep. What's the lot size on most of these?
Common, common lot size for the area, about a third of an acre.
Okay.
Yeah.
Makes sense. Great. Why don't we circle, thank you very much. Why don't we circle back around, were there any questions for Rob?
Did we happen to talk about preliminary S-PAC results?
I did not.
Okay. Well, one of the things, I'm glad I left when I did, so I'll just, we, we got results today preliminarily. The high school results have been kind of held up a bit for review, because when they first started to come out in August, early August, what they had found is, due to the generosity of the CTE to test all the sending school students, however, it wasn't a clean separation back to the sending school, so they had to take, the agency had to take time to get the numbers right before they were released. So what looks like is the case as of today, and Secretary Holcomb released them this morning, in terms of grade 11, in terms of English Language Arts, the, and there's obviously much more to come, because we haven't even had a chance to look at them yet, other than the, the numbers, the state average of proficient and above was 58%, and we were 71%. And in terms of mathematics, the percentage of the state proficient and above was 37%, and we were 56%. So, you know, like I said, those are just the, the numbers at a, at a glance, but obviously there's more to it than that, as we look to, you know, peel the layer of the onion back and, and dig into the results. I, I think as a first, as a first round of results, those are perhaps more optimistic than we would have thought going in, based upon what we had read in terms of national predictions, because of the, the difficulty of this assessment and the fact that we were moving, at least for the first time, for all the cohort students, a computer-based assessment. So we didn't know what that would bring, but yeah, we'll have to get into the numbers. You know, I look, an example for that would be the, the kneecap numbers, I know, in terms of, I'll use math as an example, I know the numbers were 50 to 60%, depending, somewhere in there, in terms of the, the range, in terms of what they would call grade level equivalency. But then, if you dug a little deeper, and what we found is if students accessed Algebra I and Geometry their freshman year and sophomore year respectively, at least, and were successful in both courses, they were most likely proficient on the kneecap. So in other words, many times, students who weren't proficient hadn't had those courses necessary to give themselves a chance to be proficient. So you look at the number and you say, well, someone might say, "Oh, that's not that high a percentage, the 50 or 60%." But then, when you look at the students that had the courses, that percentage was in the 90s. So that's, you know, not making excuses at all, it's just getting the specificity of what those numbers means, based on the preparation of the students. So that's what we kind of have to do now with the, with the S-PAC and all the curriculum realignment that's gone on and continues to go on. So.
We can talk some more in our agenda for, like, Planning Day, to talk about what the board might like to see about S-PAC and-
Yep.
Where it is.
Yep.
Any, any questions for Rob? So I'm going to make a suggestion that can easily be challenged, but with the task team updates, minutes to those most recent meetings are posted on our CCSU Board website. There are no action items stemming from any of the meetings at this point in time. So generally, I think what I'll do is, is ask if there's any questions with regards to the committee meetings with those task teams, and if there aren't any questions, we'll move on to the next agenda topic. So our next agenda topic is the Planning Day, an annual chance for the U-46 Board to assemble. We have an annual process that we will keep allegiance to, and that will be our, taking a look at our board survey and kind of taking a look at that over some longitudinal kind of basis, where have we been, how are we doing? We'll have an open discussion about whether that indicates for us work of the board that we need to undertake. But in addition to that, the agenda can really be co-created by us. I, we'll, we'll talk some before, but I think something that we had imagined to be happening in the fall isn't going to happen, and something that we hadn't imagined is going to happen in its place. So we do have some changes with the Visioning Summit, and we'll discuss that in our next agenda topic, and then also some changes with the Red Study Vote, which we'll discuss as well in the future. So is there, is there something that the, you know, I, I really feel that the board is in a, in a bit of a transition, the community may be in a, in a process of transformation, depending upon how the red vote goes. So as we look at our Planning Day in September, a couple of months before that, that vote, is, are there particular topics that people would like to roll their sleeves up and have the administration support us in having a discussion about?
I have some, I have some ideas, but I think, like, maybe we could, like, set a deadline to maybe email Judy by or something?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, well, I think that's a great sort of method for us to do it. I mean, for me, I would be interested in, in reading Rob's principals' report, there's some work that's going to be ongoing about graduation requirements. It might be interesting to kind of get caught up a little bit in that process and see how the board can support it and contribute to it. And, you know, so those types of elements where we might be able to get some information to digest ahead of time, not spend our time being presented, but- not spend our time being presented, but have information ahead of time, digest, and then have a discussion opportunity kind of then seeking where we either want to have a budgetary impact or whether we want to talk about resources or so forth. So why don't we say the meeting is September twenty-first, which would have us, you know, wanting to make sure that org notes what, two weeks ahead of time?
At least a week.
At least a week. So why don't we say around by September tenth that you can send something to me with a CC to Ju- Judy, Superintendent. And what we can do is we can kind of bring that together. If we can, if we can jump right at it, we can add to it. Otherwise, it might be a matter of fleshing out. And one of the things that we do at work right now is call it a little bit of a living agenda. So we may have a whole series of items that people raise. And then actually at our meeting, we can kind of take a vote and say, in this moment in time, which one do we want to concentrate on? And kind of then give permission that we may not concentrate on everything, but we'll be concentrating on what is most of interest by the, by the board. So sound good? September tenth? And that of course is also, you know, it's open to administrators. If there's something that you feel like, boy, it'd be great to, to get the board to start to ruminate over this stuff. I think we, I think certainly on the list I would put out there is financial implications of caps.
Yeah.
And where caps.
Allowable growth.
The allowable growth caps are part of legislation now that at least for next year and the year after, that there will be an assigned growth amount on your budget and you cannot exceed that growth. Right now, I believe high school for next year is one point nine eight or one point nine three.
Under two.
So it's an under two percent growth for the high school budget. So.
You might want to also include the GISU. I think we'll be able to have the information.
What's that?
Grand Isle Supervisor Union.
That letter, I'm sorry.
Yep.
We were gonna, were we gonna talk about that at our September meeting?
You don't have a September meeting, so we're gonna do it for Planning Day.
For our next, oh, do it on plan, okay.
Yeah, and whether there was, is that deadline is October one or October?
Yeah, cause that was timely.
That was definitely something that I had in mind. Yeah. Maybe that would be like a topic of like, you know, like enrollment or like Rob's type of idea, like enrollment ideas, Grand Isle.
So one of our meeting spaces that we've used before isn't, a couple of them aren't available. We've been off-site and used VPR. That's not available currently. We've used Park Street and we've used a space in the Center for Technology before. But Judy brought to my attention that Maple Street Park has a meeting space. The Community Room at the new police station is, may be available. Here may be available. Is there a preference on, by the board? Or do you want Judy and I to work out those details?
I think those all sound good. Whatever you.
No one would be disappointed if it was one of those?
We have, um, Community Rooms at VSAC too, but that's, if, I don't know if everybody works out here.
Yep.
Be easier for
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we'll put them all in the hopper and kind of.
See what availability is.
That sounds great.
What about, what do you, um, I have two questions about Planning Day. One is since you'll be meeting through dinner, if there's a preference in what you'd like us to organize for you on that behalf. And, um, the second question was, can we structure the agenda in a way where, um, the building administrators can come in like at three, but then be released?
Yep.
Out by five or six?
Seven fifty-six. Yeah, both of those are completely, are, are my thinking as well.
Okay, great.
I can work on the details of, of food and beverage for us to
Great.
exist for those five hours. And yeah, my thought is, is to plan the agenda so that, you know, that three to four, three to four-thirty gives a chance and then we can let administrators go. So we'd definitely do the survey afterwards and that kind of stuff.
Great.
Okay. The tenth of September, please just send anything you've got, hopes and wishes, and we can review that and put something together. Next agenda topic is the Visioning Summit update. So as I, as was reported in the org notes, that upon the determination that there would be a red vote in our communities, a Regional Educational District vote in our communities of Essex, Essex Junction and Westford to take place on November third, our timing for a visioning summit to be, to occur over a two-day time span from November sixth to seventh ended up to just be difficult to, to imagine it all working. We'd be in a pretty high gear trying to recruit somebody while we probably would need to also be in a high gear in explaining the Regional Educational District. And the two of them could easily become a confusing matter. There's also the nuance that if the Regional Educational District goes through, that the scope deciding some of the future needs and structures and the stakeholders involved are going to be a little different than they are currently. So with that in mind, the decision was made to cancel the visioning summit scheduled for the sixth and seventh. So there's been a small group of people, including our facilitator, who have been notified and the, the advisory team and now the core planning team, that word has to go out to, to folks. So we're kind of in the process of rolling that out. I, I had a long discussion by email and also on the phone with our facilitator. And she's been with us actually through a process of two years now to prepare the district for this event. Is, you know, for all of us involved, there's, there's some real disappointment that we won't be going through with the summit, but feel that there's been a significant movement in our thinking and in our organization and our approach benefited from the appreciative inquiry. And really, you just need to see the visual proof of that right there in the front of the school. That was our sandbox exercise where we brought together forty people to imagine what the front could be. And, uh, and we're fortunate enough today to be able to see that vision right there in front of us. So it works when we focus on our strengths and we pull from people's creativity and imagination and we get out of that deficit sense of looking what's broken because you attract more of what you focus on. And that's why we need to focus on the exceptional work and the creativity and professionalism that surrounds us. So. I, I think we're better off for it and there, I think there's also, there will be a need for some type of visioning summit in the future.
Absolutely.
Perhaps that will be s- something that's undertaken by the Regional Educational District sometime soon. Any questions about that postponement, the decision?
Makes sense.
There's a lot going on, all at the same time. The next one is that red Regional Educational Study update and I can hand it over to Superintendent.
See, probably have, I don't know, um, read newspaper articles about last Tuesday. The State Board met at the Steakhouse in Berlin and Brendan Kenny, the Chair, had written, of the Red Study Committee, excellent job of writing up some talking points for his presentation. And Superintendent Andrews and I were planning to attend along with Chris Leopold. And, um, Chris Leopold asked if I'd like to carpool down. I carpool down with him early. Because of my love of their creamy machine there. And we no sooner sat down and the State Board Chair announced that they were about to lose their form. So they said, we see that some representatives from Essex are here. Would you like us to take up your agen- this agenda topic to make a decision? At which time, um, Greg Glennon presented the green pages for the State Board and then Chris Leopold and I were asked to go up and fortunately had my computer with me and I was able to read Brendan's talking points, which I spoke on his behalf. And we answered a couple of questions and, and then they unanimously approved the report. So, um, it was with regret that Brendan wasn't there because we weren't supposed to be on the agenda until after one. And Superintendent Andrews was also planning to arrive at one and the whole agenda topic was done by twelve-ten. So, um, it was awkward, but a great outcome. And it was very exciting to know that we had made it through yet another gateway of moving forward. And the Red Study Communications Team met that night. An incredible group of people really honing in on what those questions were from the survey of over six hundred people that participated in the community, taking those major themes and, um, creating articles that have appeared as you've seen in the Essex Reporter. So I think they're doing a great job of getting the word out. Superintendent Andrews and I both mentioned the major talking points that our convocation addresses. And we'll plan to visit each of our schools to answer any questions internally as far as any questions faculty and staff may have moving forward. And the Red Study Communications Committee is looking at, I should actually have Kathy speak to it, but being available at different events, key community events and holding two forums at, i- in each of the three communities. And those dates have yet to be set, but you have a meeting this Thursday?
They are set. Yeah, that's what I was sharing at the open house. We made little flyers that had kind of some key points about the committee and the results and then that we want to get the word out and have kind of community forums to talk about what we've learned and what we know and what we do next and what, answer any questions they have. So. Think, um, there is Essex Elementary School, Westford, and then here at the high school and they are the sixteenth, the twentieth, and there's another date. I can't remember what it is. But I have it right here. It's on my schedule. But I know the, uh, the twentieth is a Sunday and we thought that that would be helpful for folks who couldn't make it during the day or the evening. The sixteenth is at Essex Elementary School. And then the seventeenth is in Westford. And twentieth here at the high school.
Great. So I, I do want to recognize that, um, you know, the, the school board has a role in ensuring and promoting the educational instruction within our community and we need to make decisions that support that. And we have been supportive of the process of the Red Study Committee. We were, we and ourselves are in a, in a weird land, U forty-six, in which we are not a board represented there, but obviously our constituents are. I've sat on the Red Study Committee as a private citizen, but also are able to then bring that back to here. But in this action of preparing for the vote, the study committee and members of the community have more leeway than the school board does as a board in advocating or spending dollars and resources towards that advocacy of it. Certainly doesn't limit us as individuals and citizens, but as a board, I think we're still, I'm still trying to, as your Chair, figure out the way that we sort of go on record about it, but to try to also understand that we're not part of the three boards that have been going through this process. So. But that's, that's, there's a, there's a nuance there that we navigate every single year with our budget. It's the same kind of thing. It's that we, we cannot print up signs and say, vote yes for the budget, but we can be certain that people know that we have done our due diligence, we've been responsible and that we believe that it's a solid budget to produce the results that our communities asked us to ensure happen. So just wanted to call your attention to that.
If I could just add too, that November third, there is no election for anything else. No state or national, nothing. So this is a one topic and what's going to be incredibly important is to get the vote, get people out to vote on one topic. And in some ways, it might be helpful because people will be clear about what they're coming out to vote for. But it'll be incumbent upon the committee, the Red Study Committee, to ensure we, we get out the vote. And, um, and in the meantime, answer any questions. I know there's about eight to ten other places in the state right now that are also in process. And, you know, on behalf of the Red Study Committee, the website that was developed with all the documents and all the information and all the processes is truly a gift to many to follow, just as Chittenden East was for, for the Red Study Committee. Um, and I think, you know, the more we can help educate people, because they're all a little different, because our structures are a little different, but it'll be incumbent upon us to, to continue to support others that are, that are approaching the process as well.
And one final point I wanted to make, and certainly can talk as there are questions, but in this, if there is an affirmative vote by the community, it will happen at the same time in which board, school directors are elected. That happens simultaneously. That board is seated. If the vote is affirmative, the board obviously never gets created if it's negative. But it will be some heavy lifting by this board. There's a lot of work to be done. And it's a short period of time. Learning curves are going to be difficult to overcome. So members of the community that have served on school boards are going to be really ideal for this new board. So I'd like to just encourage you all to reflect upon your own commitments and whether it's something that you can imagine yourself doing. It will be double duty for a period of time. Obviously you could, there is always the ability to resign from one board if you get onto another one. So it's, it's not a chiseled in stone kind of thing, but consider it. And if you've got any questions, I can help answer some of them. Judy, Kim Gleason is also another one. Brendan Kenny, who served as Chair, is another person that you could reach out to. If you're trying to, to understand what that commitment might be and how you could serve the community. It will be important that, you know, when people start going through the educational financing and so forth, that somebody's not like all of us have been, sort of head spinning of like, what's an equalized pupil? What's ADM? Why don't we just count the number of kids that we're educating? So those are, those are some confusing matters that many of us have navigated. So, those are, those are some confusing matters that many of us have navigated in our past, so.
Thanks for saying that, Brian, and, and I'll be working with Chris Leopold to identify when petitions need to be taken out, and the timeline, so that you're ready, and how mu- how many signatures you need. Well, just like what we do when you reorganize anyway, we'll send all that information out, ac- actually to the Red Study Committee, 'cause I think that would be an important communicate to the, all three communities moving forward.
Hearing nothing else, I'm gonna move on to consent agenda, unless somebody wants to raise their hand now and say that they want to be on the board? Anyone? Everyone's keeping their hands up. No scratching for the templer. So, the consent agenda, I'm going to, so for the purposes of our minutes, these, you'll recall, these need to be outlined with a little bit more specificity. I'm gonna review them to, Aaron, for your sake, to try to capture some of the specificity, but a lot of it's right in the org notes. So, the consent agenda includes the approval of warrants, which is routine and recommended, the approval of meeting minutes from June 8th and August 11th, 2015, which is also recommended. To affirm the parent slash student handbook, which is an annual action by the board, was available for your review and is recommended. The approval of the CTE budget transfer, which is, deals with the Carl Perkins grant funds, and to have those to allow them to cover more salary requirements in the general fund by transferring between salary line and equipment, which is recommended. A bank resolution to author, this will be authorizing the board chair to sign the resolution from People's United for, for the purposes of deleting Lynette Corbin, who was the previous treasurer for the district, from our, being a signer on our bank accounts, recommended. The approval of a donation to EHS STEM Academy, a $2,000 anonymous donation to help fund online class, which, of course, is recommended. And then there's a tuition waiver request, which materials were included in your org notes. So, would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda? I'd like to remove the tuition waiver request. Anyone else have anything?
Brian, what did you say, approve an anonymous donation of $2,000 to the, was it for the STEM Academy?
Yes, the STEM Academy. So, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented with the subtraction of the tuition waiver request? I so move to present the consent agenda with the removal of tuition waiver request? Second?
Second.
Second? So, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions, passes unanimously. So, tuition waiver request, we have that material that was part of our org notes. I'm gonna ask administration if they have a recommendation with, with regards to the board's action on that request.
Would you like to go?
So, the...
So, if we're gonna do this in open session, just kind of a global statement?
Yes.
About to recommend or not?
Not recommend. The administration is, is not recommend, or recommending that the tuition waiver request be denied.
That's correct. And if they'd want details, we'd have to go into an executive session.
Yeah, well, let's, let's put a motion on the floor, so that we can discuss it. Motion, need someone to make a motion that the board follow the administrator, the administration's recommendation to, to reject the tuition waiver request as presented.
And that would open us up for discussion?
And then, once we have a motion, then we can discuss it.
Yep.
And if, if we want to move to executive session at that point, then we can make a motion to do so with a motion on the floor.
Okay, I so move to accept the administration's request to deny the tuition waiver request.
Great. And a second? Okay. So, is there any discussion? And, I mean, are we, would, would it feel more comfortable to go into executive?
I think so, yeah.
So, can I have a motion to table this? And what we can do is then just, just, we have one more agenda topic, is just the, I believe we, oh, we don't. Okay. I'm sorry, I was seeing the org notes. So, I would like to make a motion that the board go into executive session at 7:14 PM for the purposes of a student matter, tuition waiver request by a student.
Second.
Second. So, I believe that puts us into executive session without a vote, right?
Um...
Or do we vote?
You still vote to go into executive session.
So, we have a second, we have a motion to go into executive session, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, okay. We'll, we will go into executive session.